Okay. Um, welcome everyone. So Bill, can you please open the meeting?
Sure, I'll read the statement of compliance. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act. Proper public notice of this meeting was published in local newspapers on October 10, 2015 and October 11, 2015. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on cable television channel 77 and Fios Chaney channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs which can be accessed through the district's homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in the electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting and if use of that device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business. Will you please rise for salute to flag?
(Inaudible)
Ms. Angley.
Here.
Mr. Biancamano.
Present.
Ms. Evans.
Here.
Dr. Gold.
Here.
Mr. Clubfeld.
Here.
Ms. Mitchell.
Here.
Ms. Sobolov.
Here.
And Ms. Tyroller.
Here.
Do we have a recognition portion today? Dr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Good evening, Madam President and fellow Board members. It's my honor this evening to once again announce the Students of the Month for September. Starting off with Brant School, we have a kindergarten student, India Magaletta. (Applause). India is an exceptional student. She follows the classroom routines, is engaged in learning, plays well with friends, and is an overall pleasure to have in class. Please join me in recognizing India Magaletta.
(Applause).
(Inaudible).
Alexander puts great effort in whatever task is presented to him. He is incredible work ethic and his ability to collaborate with peers makes him a fabulous role model at Calabro School. Alexander is a great listener and follows directions. He's always willing to help out in any way possible. Alexander has a positive attitude and is a good friend to his classmates. Please join me in congratulating Alexander. Transitioning to sixth grade can be difficult for students. There are more responsibilities and the assignments are more challenging and involved. Not for Tashana. She has not skipped a beat since the beginning of the school year. She completes all of her assignments and puts forth great effort no matter how large or small the task. We are very proud of her and look forward to watching her grow academically and socially. Please join me in congratulating Tashana. Our next student is a third grader from Wallace School, Camelia Suarez. Camelia is an outstanding student. She takes pride in her work and always tries her best. Camelia is even more an outstanding person. She is kind, empathetic, and helpful. She's taken a girl who just moved from a very different country than ours under her wing. Every class should have a Camelia in it. Please join me in congratulating Camelia. From the junior high school, we have an eighth grader, Christian Santiago. Not only is Christian a diligent worker in the classroom, but he is a friendly, considerate individual. There is a student in our class who just moved to Hoboken and does not speak English. Christian stepped up to the plate and told his teachers and guidance counselor that he will translate for this student in his classes. While Christian is helping this new student, he is not letting this role affect his grades. Christian still diligently takes notes, does his homework, and is maintaining an A average in English class. Christian's approach to balancing his new role in the classroom and keeping up with his grades is what makes him a suitable candidate for Student of the Month. Please join me in congratulating Christian. Our High School Student of the Month is a 12th grader, Tiara Stevens. Tiara is an exceptional individual. Her charm, charisma, and genuine good nature make her an asset to any endeavor. She is quick to make the best of a difficult situation and is equally ready to encourage a fellow student who is having difficulties. Tiara is a member of the Advanced Placement Program. She is a Secretary of the Hispanic Culture Club. She's also a member of the Yearbook Staff and the Literary Magazine. Please join me in congratulating Tiara. Before I conclude, I would like to recognize all the school principals who this month are bringing awareness to Hispanic Heritage Month with all the schools are doing their activities. We have Words of the Day. We have famous authors, Hispanic authors going on in class. But I do want to highlight two activities that are going on which we would like to invite Board members. Friday, October 23rd, 9:00 a.m. at Brant School, there will be dance festivities with the kindergarten students. It is really a cute event that Ms. Trainor puts together there. And we also have another event at Connors. I believe it's...
Fifteen.
I'm missing that. I believe it's August, I mean October...
Fifteen.
Fifteenth, right? Which is this week, fifteenth. At nine o'clock also at Connors Elementary School. At the high school, there were some activities going on as well. They had Hispanic Heritage Parade which the students participated in in Bayonne. There's also the Eighth Annual Hispanic Heritage Essay Contest which is sponsored by the HEA. So I would like to commend the school principals for that, and thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to administration reports. First, the superintendent.
Okay, good evening. Certainly a wonderful way to start any Board of Education meeting is to honor the hard work and accomplishments of all of our students. My guess is that each of our students, no matter how young or how old they are, knowingly or unknowingly probably subscribe to a philosophy set forth by Abraham Lincoln and that kind of goes along the lines of people shouldn't really worry about being recognized, but rather they should strive to be worthy of recognition. However, when one is recognized, he or she should be proud of their accomplishments and the fruits of their labor. So I hope all of our children are extremely proud of themselves because I think we certainly are very, very proud of them. As we're nearing the mid-marking period point, a few announcements that I have. We have a one o'clock dismissal on October 21st for parent-teacher conferences for students in grades K through eight. Parents of high school students can actually call and set up a meeting at any time during that week and quite frankly, at any time that they would like to see a teacher. We also have a full-day professional development day on October 29th. There's a lot of things that we should be very proud of that are happening in our schools and I'd like to share some of them. At our junior and senior high school, our staff and our administration are working really hard to roll out a new advisory program. I couldn't be more proud of the teachers at the high school and junior high as well as the administrators because they're trying something that's completely different to meet the social and academic needs of all of the students. It's a best practice model and I think that it's going to really put our high school on the map. As you know, we also have a group of committed students that are attending Rutgers pre-medical honors program. And actually, out of the group that's going every Wednesday night, we have a number of students that are participating in that group that actually asked to graduate with honors. And basically, that means they have to participate in an additional Sunday program that takes them through a series of lectures and courses in order to graduate with that distinction. So they seem to be really enjoying the program. On the music front, our marching band has already played at a number of events and they sound fantastic. We were just recently at an event in the park and I thought they were amazing. They were. On the fields and on the court and in the classroom, our student athletes are certainly doing everything they can to make Hoboken proud. And a new middle school or middle-level intramural program for students in grades six, seventh, and eighth grade is being rolled out at this time. So we're really excited about giving opportunities for our middle-level grade students to participate in a range of athletic...I don't necessarily want to say competition, but more friendly skill development in order to gain the necessary prerequisites to participate on the high school level. New this year to Hoboken High School is a Princeton Review SAT prep program. We've talked about that already in the past, but we have a cohort of 12th grade students who are actually piloting the program right now during the day. And we have a pilot of 11th grade students that are actually set to pilot the program in the spring. And then in September 2016, it will be offered to all 11th graders at Hoboken High School. And somewhat along those same lines, in order to prepare our students for the challenges of some of these assessments that are in many ways gatekeepers to their rise to the collegiate level, we are also going to be administering the PSATs to all ninth grade students this year, including...yeah, it's actually, it's okay. It's actually a really positive thing. We have administered the PSATs to 10th graders and to 11th graders in the past, but this year we've added ninth graders thanks to the cooperation on the part of the guidance staff and the administration at the high school. That will make a world of difference, giving students the opportunity to practice those tests three years in a row at no cost to parents is huge in a community such as Hoboken to really help the kids participate. In addition to that, our students in grades four through 12 are already beginning their coursework in the Johns Hopkins Gifted and Talented CTY program. So we're happy that we have a number of students taking classes through Johns Hopkins. I'm also extremely excited to announce that our junior and senior high school was selected to participate in the Google Expeditions Pioneer Program. I don't know if anyone has ever heard of that, but the Google Expeditions Pioneer Program is something that is kind of being rolled out across the country right now. And it's an opportunity. It's a virtual mobile app that gives teachers in classrooms the opportunity using cardboard, almost like the old-fashioned viewers that used to be able to look into. This gives them the opportunity to explore the world in a class period. And there's a number of science expeditions that the kids could take part in and a number of historical expeditions. On October 3rd, we have 36 class periods at Hoboken Junior/Senior High School that will be participating in 24 different science expeditions. So I would like to publicly congratulate Chris Delafave and Donna DiCunto for applying for this because it's not many high schools or middle schools have been accepted into this program so far. The slots are limited, so it was nice that we were able to participate. District-wide, our K through 12 Science Fair packets have gone out. Our elementary schools are gearing up for it as well as the middle school and even many of our high school students. Our elementary schools are taking part in a number of Hispanic celebration programs, as you know, so hopefully we get to see many of you at those programs. And also, for the first time on October 9th, our district was represented at Kane University's Diversity Council session. This is really a great opportunity for this district to participate in the Diversity Council. It not only provides a number of great professional development opportunities to our staff, but it gives us the opportunity to involve our students at every level, elementary, middle school, and high school, in a range of activities that promote tolerance, diversity, and appreciation of people's talents and differences. So I'm excited about that as well. Our after-school enrichment programs are underway at Wallace School and Calabro. I want to make sure everyone takes note on the agenda that there is in fact a slight difference in the cost of tuition for those two programs. And in case anyone had that question kind of brewing ahead of time and you thought maybe you were going to ask that question, I figured I'd head it off. Because of just scale, sheer scale, the size of Calabro School versus the size of Wallace School, and the ability to absorb certain amount of students, you will see Calabro's program a little bit higher in cost than you will Wallace's. However, one of the initiatives that I'm currently taking on for next year's school year is to do everything that we can to create a more consistent, potentially vibrant, after-school program that cuts across all of our elementary schools, Wallace, Calabro, as well as Connors, in order to ensure high-quality after-school programming, equity, and access for all of our students. Connors After-School Program does operate five days a week, but it's grant-funded through family-friendly and no child left behind. Over the past few weeks, I've had the pleasure to meet with a number of parents. I probably had ten to twelve parents in my office a few weeks ago and then probably 10 or 11 more parents as well. To talk about everything from curriculum to instruction, instructional practice, homework, everything you can imagine that parents are a little bit concerned about, and it gave me the opportunity to really hear what some of our parents' interests are. But one of the things that I think is really important, we talked about it at the Curriculum Committee meeting, is that we are in the process of doing a curricular overhaul in the district and that curricular overhaul will make our curriculum become a clear-cut roadmap of expectations for our teachers. It will also create an opportunity to make curriculum more visible to all parents and community members, easily adaptable to differentiated instruction, as well as a connectivity to evaluation for the purpose of really looking at student achievement to see if we're making the progress that we're hoping to make. So those two initiatives, the after-school program as well as the curriculum piece are right at the top of my list right now and I'll continue to report out as we move forward. And then lastly, I look forward to reporting out more extensively at our upcoming meetings. As soon as we receive our PARC test scores back from the state of New Jersey, we will deliver a comprehensive testing report. At this point, it's a little bit difficult to do it when every single grade level that participated in that, we don't have their state test scores back. So when we do, I will report out. It'll probably be either in November or December, but most likely no later than December. I've attended the Early Childhood Advisory Committee meeting and the Special Education Advisory Committee meeting within the last month, and I have to say that I was feeling very charged when I left both of those meetings by the spirit and the dedication of the parents who were at those meetings. So I appreciated being there and feeling very welcomed by the parents who were there. And also, I've been working hand-in-hand with Mr. Enrico and also the Hoboken Education Association and could not be more pleased with the level of cooperation on their part. And I'm confident, very, very confident, that we are going to do some tremendous things together in this district in the years to come. I couldn't be more happy to be in Hoboken and in the Hoboken School District. So with that being said, this concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Moffett, the Business Administrator's report?
Yes, I have nothing to report this time.
Okay. So we'll move on to committee reports. So first, Dr. Gold, Finance, please.
It's just Leon. Anyway, while the financial report is pretty much pro forma, we're always in the process of evaluating our cost-saving program. For example, we expect savings this year from our transportation budget to be between $500,000 and $820,000, which is a good thing. In addition, our superintendent, which you heard, is spearheading a budget realignment process. This will result in a more comprehensive after-school program and hopefully we'll be able to keep any budget increase under the 2% cap. So the budget's constantly being looked at and I think we'll have a lot of savings that can be reflected in more productive programs. So that's the report.
Ms. Evans, Governance?
Sure. Okay. So the Governance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, October 7th. In attendance was myself, Ms. Sobolov, Ms. Tyroller, Dr. Johnson, and Ms. Stromwell. We reviewed all agenda items and recommend all for approval tonight. We do have one retirement on the agenda. We'd like to thank Susan Corman Repetti for her years of service to the district and wish her all the best in her retirement. We'd like also to thank two groups who are offering programs to our students in the coming months. The NED Show will offer its assembly to all students in kindergarten through eighth grade. This popular assembly promotes academic achievement and positive relationships while encouraging healthy self-esteem. At the high school, Chip Killingsworth and Susan Pilar from the American Academy of Dramatic Arts will be offering an acting workshop to 10th through 12th graders who are enrolled in theater too. We, the committee, discussed personnel and staffing matters. And Dr. Johnson also presented two new programs for the district. The first is Hoboken's Teacher Readiness Program. So the district will be engaging in a project with some local colleges and universities in order to help us fill a pipeline of paraprofessionals and substitutes. And the district in turn will be offering an after-school program for these hires to help prepare them for future careers, so a mutually beneficial program. And also, the district will be hosting Montclair State University's graduate and certificate programs. And what this is, is over the summer, we'll be offering onsite graduate school programs for Montclair State right here in our schools for our teachers. And teachers can earn a master's degree in educational leadership which will lead to both supervisory and principal certificates. So that is my report.
Thank you. Ms. Sobolov?
The Athletic and Performing Arts Committee met on October 7th and in attendance was Dr. Johnson, Dr. Hernandez, myself, Ms. Tyroller, Ms. Stromwell, Ms. Miller, Mr. England, and Jason Goldstein who is a representative from BookTix. In the Performing Arts, a new ticket system was discussed for the district's two major performances. Due to sellout crowds at many shows resulting in either standing room only or people being turned away, a new BookTix system will be implemented. BookTix is able to track sales to ensure that all ticket holders are accommodated safely and comfortably and that everyone who purchased a ticket has a seat. It's a very flexible system and it was chosen in parts because it can accommodate either online purchases or will still sell them in person in the lobbies. You can pay with credit card or cash, so that was very important. And it also can accommodate lots of different discounts or packages, like for example, senior citizen discounts or something. So look forward to that at the next show, which is in February, I believe. In the athletics, excuse me, the Student Athletic ACE Pilot Program was discussed and that began last year. And the program coordinates the athletic department, the teaching staff, and the guidance department to track any student athlete and identify individual support needs. The student athletes are then provided with individually targeted academic support which is mandatory for their continued participation in their sport. This program has been very successful in supporting students and reducing academic probation, and so the program will be continued and will be expanded. The NCAA, which is the National Collegiate Athletic Association, eligibility guidelines and grant applications were discussed. And as Dr. Johnson mentioned, the junior high school intramural programs. And the three that have just started recently for the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders are swimming, track, and lacrosse. Ms. Smith, your report?
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, Wellness?
The Wellness Subcommittee met on Wednesday, October 7th at Demer's Conference Room. Those present was myself as chair, Ruth Tyroller, Irene Sobolov, Sharon Angley, and Dr. Christine Johnson, Superintendent. The Superintendent provided a list of several programs she intends to implement. One is Smiles Mobile Dental Program and there's no charge for parents or schools. Two, It Takes Heart to Be a Hero, a Jump Rope for Health and Hops for a Heart national programs. District staff are exploring the program and intend to hold fundraisers and contests in support. Three is district-wide wellness portal on the district webpage. Four, the school nurse at Connors, Sue Hoffman, is completing a webinar on wellness through the Kaiser Permanente. She intends to start a walking club for staff and children and perhaps an exercise program. Five, the Early Childhood Nurse's Plan to provide educational materials regarding influenza and will pursue several activities to promote good health. And some of them are cough etiquette, dental health, hands-only CPR, asthma management, discuss healthy food choices with kindergartners, presentations on headlight screening, work with classroom teachers to help guide them for healthy and allergy-safe snacks, among many others. We also had a presentation by Mr. Delafave, the district GNT Coordinator, that's Gifted and Talented Coordinator. And he's currently enrolled at Ramapo College in a master's degree program and he's studying sustainable... sustainable studies. He gave an excellent presentation about a district certification program called Sustainable New Jersey for Schools. Kevin Metcalf and James Monaco also helped him prepare the presentation. The Sustainable Jersey for Schools is a nonprofit organization that provides tools, training, and financial incentives to support and reward schools as they pursue sustainability programs. To receive a certification, it's considered a prestigious designation for schools in New Jersey. It helps the district to gain access to special grant programs to benefit the district. Some action items and steps for two certification would encompass food and nutrition programs, energy efficiency, learning environment, renewable energy, and better waste management and recycling programs, among others. The committee was energized and looked forward to more developments in Mr. Delafave's plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bianco Mano, Facilities?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Facilities Committee met on Wednesday, October 7th, from 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. in the Demers Second Floor Conference Room. In attendance were G. Marie Mitchell, Sharon Angley, Ruth Tyroller, myself, Mr. Callagie, and of course, Dr. Christine Johnson. We discussed, the items discussed, the standard facilities requests are pretty straightforward tonight, they're mainly uses of our facilities. The city of Hoboken will be conducting poll worker training for the upcoming election on October 19th, and they're going to be using Wallace School to do that. We received an update on Brant, the Brant facade. It's right on target to be completed by October 29th or 30th. We received approval from the city to start removing the scaffolding piece by piece, and I know I'm very, very excited about that. We discussed the Brant School bathroom renovation. The rooftop bathroom will be completed in a few days, or it should have probably been completed by now. And it's great work by all involved, led by our Director of Facilities, Mr. Callagie. We also discussed the playground drainage over at the Brant School rooftop. The drainage is being addressed by removing the pipe from the existing drain and replacing it. We, the next item we discussed was the Wallace School security doors. Security doors have been installed when you enter the building to the left. The security guard will have to unlock the doors. This is a safety measure to enhance the security measures for our students. As well as the early childhood security devices. Security measures have been taken in terms of locks and cameras at gates at the outside classrooms. We will also be painting the elevated curbs for precautionary reasons. We discussed the Wallace Playground. It is completed and it looks great. It took a bit longer than expected due to wet weather and a Wallace block party. There was an odor during the installation, which is completely normal and posed no health risk, and it is now just dissipating. The Hoboken High School alarm panel had to be replaced. It was over 20 years old, and the total cost to replace it was $12,000. Just a few notes from the meeting. The Facilities Office met with the SDA regarding renovations to Connors and Demers. More information on this in the future. We have a brand-new BOE sign, Board of Education sign, coming into the building tonight. I don't know if anybody witnessed it coming in, but it does say that this is where our central offices are, and I'm very, very excited for it. And then finally, the after-school meals are hovering around 40 meals, and we are hoping to increase that to 100 meals for the grants. So that's all for this month, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Now for my President's Report. We've had a very busy month since our last meeting here in the Hoboken Public Schools, and it's been an exciting one for the board as we begin a new chapter with our new Superintendent. And we're learning a lot about each other, and I think we've had a very nice, effective month. As board members, we have the pleasure of being invited to school events, and as Dr. Hernandez mentioned, we're really, I'm excited to attend the performances at Connors Elementary and at the Brant School. And I have to say, we got a really amazing invitation from the Connor School. So I'd like to congratulate Principal Fitzhugh and the teachers for putting that together. That was, you know, you open your board mail, and this was a delight, right? I think everybody's nodding. I just wanted to tell everyone out there that Ms. Sobolov discussed BookTix, this new ticketing, online ticketing system that's going to be used, or we're going to try for the plays. And nobody should be afraid of that. There's still going to be ways to purchase tickets with cash in the schools, so it's not going to prohibit anyone from being able to buy a ticket. And we really needed to do this as the standing room only isn't allowed, you know, we actually, the fire department doesn't allow us to have people standing up. And it was hard because without assigned seats, you know, you get a seat here, a seat there, and it was hard for Ms. Miller to manage it. So it's really going to be a very good thing. It'll guarantee that everybody knows that they have a seat when they arrive. It'll stop the big line of people waiting to buy tickets, so plays and things can start promptly and on time. I just wanted to remind everybody about the event I've been talking about for the last few months. In conjunction with the AAUW, the American Association of University Women, we are holding a Women in Leadership event at Hoboken High School for all our junior high school and senior high school girls and all Hoboken eighth-grade girls from the charter and private schools. The primary goal of this event is to empower our young women to believe they can be leaders. There'll be over 500 young women that will be attending, and we also have seats for 125 professional women from the community. The invitations, I've been collecting emails, those will be going out via Eventbrite this week. So if any of you have sent me your emails and you don't get the Eventbrite, ping me at my board address, and I'll make sure that I push it out to you again. And it's scheduled for Thursday, November 19th, at the high school, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. It consists of a keynote address by a nationally-recognized professional woman and a panel discussion, which what I can only call "women who have smashed the glass ceiling." And then at the very end, from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m., all the girls will dismiss at 3:00 o'clock, but from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. is going to be a professional networking session for all of the professional women that are attending, our school professional women, and also the senior high school, the female senior high school students. So it'll be the class of 2016, those women will attend. So they'll get their, get a real experience and learn to talk to people in fields that they want to maybe aspire to be in, and also to just learn, you know, what a networking event feels like. So we're really excited about it. And again, if you have not provided me your email address, just send me a note to my board email, rtyroller@hoboken.k12 nj.us. You can find it right on the website, and I'll get an invitation out to you. When you get your invitations, there's a limit to the seat, so apply right, you know, hit yes if you want to come. And also, we will be collecting donations. We're going to be having a Women in Leadership Scholarship. This will be the first year. And at this event, we're going to be collecting donations toward that scholarship, and it will be given to a senior who has shown leadership qualities through their high school career here at Hoboken High School, to a young lady. As a parent of an eighth grader, I have to say, the intramural program is great. My son is participating. He's coming home very tired and very happy, so I'm thankful to Mr. England and the teachers that are coaching for helping us have this program. As you realize, I'm gleeful about ninth-grade SAT. And if you have high school children that have not tried the new lunch program, because we have a new vendor, they should try it. My son refuses to bring home lunch. He doesn't want to miss what could possibly be on the menu, which I find really exciting for a school cafeteria program. Lastly, I think that we, I'd like to take a moment to give a little applause to Mr. Delafave and Ms. Akunto for the program that the Superintendent messaged. And with that, we can move on to the rest of the meeting. So now we are moving to, oh, now we'll have Board Trustee comments and questions on reports, if we have any. So from the left.
I just want to say that, you know, hearing all of the things that have been put in place since the beginning of the year is really exciting to me. I think the combination of PSATs being given to ninth through 11th graders, I guess, and then the Princeton Review Course, I would think that that's going to have a great, positive impact on our district next year. So I'm just really excited and look forward to what's coming next.
So, Dr. Johnson, I actually did not have a question about the enrichment program, and now I do after your report.
I thought you might.
So the after-school enrichment program, the rates that are on the agenda now, as you said, the rates at Collabora are going to be higher than the rates at Wallace School.
So what you see on the agenda, because it took me a while to wrap my head around it also, to be honest with you. There are two things that happen simultaneously at the elementary schools. One of them is an after-school program, okay? And that's what you see on the agenda tonight for the actual rates. The other is an enrichment, I don't even want to call it necessarily an enrichment program, but it's enrichment offerings that happen throughout the year. In addition to enrichment offerings throughout the year, what I have also learned is that each of the elementary schools has the opportunity to also offer some clubs. So as an example, the Wallace Elementary School may be offering an after-school program, which runs from 3:00, right when school ends, all the way until parents are finished with work at the 5:30, 6:00 timeframe. But then on top of that, there's also enrichment programs by outside organizations that can come in, and actually, they utilize the facility and they provide programs for kids. So I think on the last agenda, if I'm not mistaken, the Board of Education and the community saw, for example, at Collabora School, there was a piano, after-school piano enrichment program. That's above and on top of the programs. So those rates are established by the outside companies that are offering the programs. But the after-school programs themselves, the cost of those programs are predicated upon what is the rate of pay that staff members are typically paid hourly, so in other words, what we are required to, versus how many kids are actually in those programs. So depending on how many children are in those programs, I want you to think about it from the perspective, if you have multiple kids under the supervision, even if it's a safe number, under the supervision of one adult, costing blank amount per hour versus a smaller amount of students collecting a smaller amount of tuition going in, but still having to cover the cost of the hourly rate.
And that was my question. So if there's going to be less students at Collabora School, we're hiring the same amount of staff at Collabora as we do at Wallace?
Yeah, because there is a standard level of care based on the amount of students. So...
Because my whole thing is, if we could reduce the staff that's being hired for these after-school programs, maybe we could reduce the cost to our students.
Agreed. Agreed. So throughout this school year, we are absolutely going to be having in-depth conversations about the construction of a consistent after-school program that potentially has the ability to be tiered in cost and price, but yet rotates the same high-quality enrichment-type programs across all of our elementary schools.
Right. Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you.
I just wanted, because you mentioned the high school, so I wanted to mention the Hoboken High School Open House on October 15th from 6:30 to 8:30.
Dr. Gold, any, no? Ms. Evans? Yeah, and I'd just like to comment about the aftercare. Yeah, these are, they're parent-paid aftercare programs. A lot of you, the history in Hoboken of aftercare has been interesting. As a matter of fact, Ms. Mitchell's son, who graduated last year from the high school, he went, there used to be a YMCA program, and the YMCA program, like, picked the kids up from the schools and walked them over to the YMCA. And the aftercare at Wallace, when my son started, now he's in eighth grade, so he's not there anymore, that was, you know, completely separately run. And that is, is how they started. And the, I think it's great because the fact that one school has one and one doesn't makes it very hard for parents who are trying to figure out where to, you know, which elementary school is best for them if you don't have one right near your, near your house that has an aftercare. So I think it's great that we'll be moving to some kind of district-even aftercare system. I'm very excited about that. Okay, so now we're moving on to public comments, agenda items only. So Mr. Moffett will go get the sheets.
Patricia Waiters, if you can't hear me in the back, come up and take a seat. 1233 Park Avenue. A few things, but I got it justified already with the Facilities Director. That's what I was over there trying to justify. I have Wallace Retirement. Ms. Sobolov, is this your sister? Okay, so you won't be voting on this?
I will not.
A few things on, this is an agenda item, but it was the Superintendent's report. You said the Connor School is public, I mean, state-funded, right? But if you read inside the agenda, I'm seeing the fees for the two employees that's gonna, do they, do they pay come out of state funding, too? The two after-school, Mrs. White, Gwendolyn White, and this another teacher.
So they're actually grant funds as opposed to the state providing them. So there's two streams that fund the salaries for those programs. One is called Family Friendly, which is part of a larger school-based youth services grant. And the other is actually federal funding. It's through No Child Left Behind. Our intent is, as we move forward through this school year into next school year and begin to create a comprehensive after-school program, although Family Friendly is kind of on its way out, that grant has dried up. So we are basically going to fund the Connors after-school program for the remainder of the year with No Child Left Behind funds. Next year, all of our elementary school after-school programs will consistently be funded through a few different sources, but No Child Left Behind will be consistent across the district.
All right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna look up the No Child Left Behind, because I'm familiar with those, a few of those clauses there. And when you said the other one, the Family Friendly one exhausted all of its funds, exhausted after this.
We, we just received notification this past month that as of the end of December, the Family Friendly grant funds will not exist anymore.
Okay, and I also want to thank you, too, for seeming like, what, so far it's only been a month into school, cooperating, and your doors is always open. You did mention that parents did come and meet with you, and that's what I'm working on hard to try to get out more parents to come out instead of, you know, less complaining and come out and really meet with you. Thank you for opening your doors for that and entertaining those parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waiters. And for the audience to know, we made a little exception to the rule because we only had one person commenting, so that's why we answered the question in the middle of the five minutes. Okay, so with that, we're moving on to Superintendent and Board Comment on Public Agenda Comments. Any, we're good? And now we're moving on to the agenda items. So we'll now have Board Trustee comments and questions on agenda items, if there are any.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Three of them. Curriculum 8.01, the approval of research study at Collabora School by Fairleigh Dickinson University. Dr. Johnson, is there any costs related to this program?
No.
Okay, and I was just curious, who initiated the program? Was it the professor over at, Dr., excuse me, Dr. Nicole Hansen? Or was it a mixture of our teachers and the professors? It was both?
It was, it was a mixture of both. We were partly engaged in a partnership last year as Fairleigh Dickinson was sending in... in, uh, some professors to do some, um, coaching, instructional coaching for our student teachers and some of our first and second-year teachers. And while they were participating in that, um, some of the staff members, as, as well as the principal, um, kind of, uh, sat with the, um, coordinators from Fairleigh Dickinson and decided that they were going to actually move forward with the program for this year as well. But there is no cost.
No cost, right. And, and obviously, all the results will be shared with all parties involved.
That is correct.
Okay, it's, it seems like a great program. The backup is a little vague, that's why I brought the question up here. Uh, next agenda item, Finance 10.07, the approval of contracts. Mr. Moffett? Substitute Services. Uh, is this a new service that we're adding this year?
This was, uh, viewed by the board already. This is just a, a minor increase in the base contract amount. It was adjustment for the number of-
I'm sorry, that was my follow-up question. Why are we increasing the contract?
It's just an adjustment for total, uh, district staff members. The, the actual fees, fee structure is based on a number of employees.
So, again, I was looking at the backup. What Substitute Services does is, it, it comes in and it calls some of our substitutes to come in when a teacher's absent, or what is the actual, what is the actually, because I know we used to do that internally through the, uh, ability through your office, so.
Correct. You're generally correct. Um, we have a system where they call this agency, this company, uh, to report their absences, and part of that discussion from that agency is to get the, uh, substitutes for us.
So what was being done before that? We were calling the substitutes internally, or?
Uh, pretty much, yeah. I had an individual in my office that would do that on a regular basis. Um, this, it basically does some of the similar-
And was it, I was just curious, was it too much work? Why couldn't we continue doing that instead of paying $12,000 to an outside source to do that?
Well, um, I would say the past year, we've been looking into an outside service with the idea that we can do it more efficiently, and quick, you know, and really, the speed is of the essence in cases of the substitute services. So, uh, we looked at two. One was, uh, another vendor. We decided to go with this, based on some experience, um, and, uh, we decided to move forward. And as you know, we have not filled the position, uh, as currently, uh, structured in my office.
Okay, and, and I realize that sometimes teachers have trainings, uh, professional development and things like that, where, where we're going to need substitutes, and I guess this is, this service is going to make it, like you said, uh, run more efficiently, I hope, so.
Right.
And then, the final agenda item.
I, I think-
No, Dr. Johnson, you had something?
Substitute service?
Uh, just real quick, so you do know that when we originally submitted the number of staff members to the service, I submitted the number of staff members as only our teaching staff members, not including our paraprofessional staff?
Oh, I see.
And so as a result of that, it put us in a different bracket. So when I corrected that, that's, that's the reason why that changed. Um, but yes, not only does it make us more efficient, although there's a couple bumps along the way in the beginning of the process, but what this service does is it tracks everything from the amount of days, so it keeps our payroll department and our business office out of any kind of violations with, um, uh, the Obamacare Act, and, uh, it tracks hours, it tracks days, it tracks everything along those lines, and provides us with, um, some really necessary reports that we weren't getting in the past.
Okay. It seems like there's, there's more work that, that's involved than we used to do internally, so, okay.
A lot, absolutely.
And then finally, 10.18, the approval of appointment of an assistant board secretary. I know that our assistant BA just retired, and she acted as the assistant board secretary. So, I was just curious, are we, we had one person doing two positions. Are we now going to bring in two separate people to be an assistant board secretary and assistant business administrator? Mr. Moffett, or?
10.18.
Yeah, this is a, a, a normal thing that we would do every year. It's just an event. I'm not available. This, the assistant position is both. It's, basically, I'm the board secretary business administrator, so this is the assistant to that, so the responsibilities are, uh-
So, so this new hire would be the assistant business administrator and the assistant board-
Well, it's not necessarily a new hire. I mean, it's a new individual, but it's, it's a, a position that's currently been part of the structure of my office for many years, yeah.
Okay, 'cause I'm just curious, are we hiring two separate positions?
No.
Uh, two separate people for two different-
One individual over both.
All right, no further questions. Thank you.
That, uh, excuse me, that was Diane Body, was that? So this is, so, and she retired, so that's-
And the agenda only said an assistant board secretary. If, if what it said, assistant board secretary slash assistant BA, that would have been like, oh, they're just replacing Miss Body, who did a fabulous job, and we wish her well and her retirement.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Mitchell, Ms. Soboloff, anything? This side? No? Okay, then we can move on. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have comments from Monica about-
Oh, for, uh, Monica Stromwell's out, so.
Board's attention, item, uh, 9.23 is the, uh, approval of the agreement between the board and the Hoboken School Employees Association. Monica Stromwell, uh, was unable to make it tonight. She had a last-minute, uh, uh, family issues that she had to deal with. And she chaired the board's negotiating, uh, committee. Um, and she asked me to, uh, make these comments to the board tonight before we vote on this. Um, the Hoboken School Employees Association is that, uh, contract which covers the custodians, engineers, uh, maintenance staff, full and part-time, uh, classroom aides, and, uh, our security staff. Um, some of the key issues included in the contract are, uh, and this is not in, uh, necessarily a, the, the specific order, uh, classroom aides will now be salaried employees versus, uh, hourly, uh, which provides them a regular paycheck that they can depend on, as opposed to, uh, the occasional time when they would not get paid on a school closure day. Um, uh, so I think this is respectful of, uh, you know, uh, through that, that dependability. They will, of course, work the same, uh, the, the, the number of required, uh, days. Uh, the union worked with us to reduce the number of so-called bubbles, uh, in the salary guides, which will allow the district to offer more competitive entry-level salaries when we, uh, ever get there. Likewise, the aides' salaries are more competitive with surrounding districts. This will enable us to provide continuity and stability in our early childhood classrooms, which is an important issue from the board's point of view. Uh, we'll also be providing professional development for the classroom aides. Again, this is something we wanted, and that benefits our staff, as well as, uh, our students. Uh, although the percentage increase, uh, varies slightly from year to year, the overall three-year percentage is 2.7%, uh, which matches the county average. That was our goal. I think both parties ended up feeling that that was a reasonable place to be. This contract took about eight months of meetings. It was a little rocky at times, uh, and took many long meetings, but by the end, I think we all agreed that we reached a good place that was sensitive to each other's needs. Uh, on behalf of the board's negotiating committee, I think we'd like to thank our negotiator, Carolyn Chaudry, who represented our interests well and did so with calm and fairness. Also, we would certainly like to acknowledge the Hoboken School Employees Association team members, and also Ed Stevens, their negotiator, for keeping things moving forward, even as we worked our way through some very difficult issues and some very tense meetings. Um, with that, we, the, the committee, and Peter was on the committee, I think, uh, we, we recommend the contract, uh, for your approval tonight.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Part of the reason that I'm on the school board is I get to learn things that I thought were true that aren't. So first, I'd like to thank the, uh, negotiating committee for coming up with what I think's a fair contract. But I'd like to ask a question, I mean, I know the answer, but tell me if I'm right or not. We say how much the average increase is going to be. That's our job. We have no control over how it is distributed within the union. So while you have a certain percentage, I want it to be very clear that we don't know how much each individual's going to get, because that's the union's prerogative. That's fair to say?
I believe that's a fair statement.
Okay, so, um, I think the board is fair. What the union does with their increase is the union's business. That's my editorial comment.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I under, so, Dr. Gold, what you're, uh, saying is that we're going to be passing the increases into salaries, and now it's, it's because we're adding the aides to the union that they're going to have to be paying union fees, and therefore their increases might be a little less?
No.
I'm just, I'm just, the clarification, yeah.
The clarification is, you negotiated, I think, a fair increase, but we have two different groups of people at two different parts of the spectrum. I mean, I think part of the reason you were rightly so generous, so is because there's a lot of people in the union who are not making a lot of money.
Oh, okay.
But, and tell me if you have, did this, but I don't think we have the ability to, we have no idea how that money is then distributed among the members of the union.
We, we have salary guides.
Yeah, we have salary guides. It says that, right.
But, okay, I'm not gonna belabor it, but you know what I'm saying.
That's it.
Okay, everybody good?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, so now we'll, uh, move on to the agenda vote.
Consent agenda, sure.
Consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion.
Second?
Irene?
Irene and, uh, Jean Marie.
Coral. Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Mr. Biancomano?
No on 6.01, the minutes, and yes on everything else.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Clubfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Soboloff?
I have to abstain on 9:26 and, uh, 9:23. And as was, uh, pointed out, uh, the retirement this month is my sister, Susan Rupetti. So I just wanted to wish her very well in her retirement. I know this was a, not an easy decision for her. She, uh, was a computer tech in the district for, uh, 15 years and volunteered at the PTO for, uh, fi, uh, six years before that, so about 20 years dedicated to the students and the schools of Hoboken. Um, it was not a decision she made lightly, but, um, doctor's orders. So I know she loves the district and will miss her fellow employees and her friends, and especially the children, and I wanted to, uh, thank her and wish her well in her So with that, I abstain on 9:01, uh, number four, and yes on everything else.
And, uh, Ms. Tyroller?
Yes.
Okay, so now we are up to public open comments.
I have one speaker listed, and it's, uh, Pat Waiters.
Ms. Waiters?
A few things with public comments, you know, being that I was being approached after the election, we all know, I mean, after the debate, we all know there's an election that's coming up. I just wanna go over two or three things, especially with the absence of, uh, Ms. Stonewall today. I'm sorry to hear about her family emergency, but it's kind of funny that they didn't show up at the debate, and this is like, always absence. I mean, I, we do have emergencies, but with that being said, a few issues. When you mentioned Connors and Wallace, Mr. Bianco, Monica, and all of these things that's gonna happen to Wallace, Connors is antique. I don't know the last time one of you visited Connors, but there's a young lady I assisted down there the other day with no legs. Both of her legs are amputated. There's no handicap accessibility to Connors. Did anybody know that? I wanted to know how was I gonna get a wheelchair inside so she can go check on her grandkids? And that's kind of disturbing. That's why you see the reaction and the emotions, you know? It bothers me when I keep saying about diverse issues, and it don't seem like you're doing it intentionally with the segregated effect. It bothers me. Connors is, Wallace is like a whole new school, and I live right directly across the street from Wallace. And to see the attention that building's getting, and Connors is not getting the same attention. I'mma call it like I see it. She had no legs, there's no, and then the stairs, we got the security guard right here, it's like a billion stairs you gotta walk up. I'm seeing condos be built in two months in Hoboken, 40 units, and we can't renovate a school? Just change the thought, something to think about, 'cause I'm not here to election here. Y'all know who I am, Pat Waiters. And I'mma encourage again, for people to come out on November the 3rd and think with their conscience and put somebody on this board of color. Okay? We need diversity, not sit up there and say it, and say, "Oh, well, we're diverse when you run it for election." But it's pretty disturbing to see our mayor, again, involved in politics and setting a ticket and supporting an individual. The same thing with Bayonne, any other, I mean, we got one Monica tone over the whole county, so this goes for every county, including Hoboken, 'cause we do it the worst. But to see our mayor endorse tickets, and see former zoning board members like Ms. Angley, and see other members that served on the zoning board and was picked part of her little political clique, and then become a board member, it bothers me. And I mentioned that in my debate, not to make enemies, but to place facts and educate members of the public that go out there and vote and don't care and they vote for a friend or somebody with power. The mayor and her clique should not be involved in our public school education system. Mr. Gold, kids' first ticket, that whole clique, it shouldn't be about power. We need somebody that's gonna serve the students and serve the, the teachers, the workers, serve the whole board as a whole, the whole public school system. And it bothers me. It's so disingenuous. You could sit up there with a, a straight face, I don't even know how you could do it, and say you hold integrity, all of you guys take a oath, and it's mind-bothering. It really is.
Ms. Waiters, please address me.
I'm addressed in the board, Mr., Ms. President. I'm addressed in the board, and that's another thing too with your little thing in here. I understand that. Stop with the dictatorship. I go to a lot of meetings, it's a public meeting, I'm addressed in you and the board, it's in, it's in entirety. You feel better if I say, "Madam President and the board"? It's one board. That's another thing. This is why I'm trying so hard to bring some type of integrity to this board. It's not right. It's not, it's not you versus them and the powerful mayor and her clique. So just keep that in mind, people just watching this. Good luck, Peter, and I hope I be sitting in your chair in November, but good luck, and, again, vote with your conscience and go out there and vote November the 3rd for diversity for this board of education. Pat Waiters, 7F.
Just for the record, um, Ms. Angley has never been on the zoning board. Uh, are there any comments, um, uh, from this side before we close?
Can I comment? I just want to comment, um, that the reason I chose to run for the board was to serve the children of our community. Um, my children go to the school, I'm thrilled with the district, and I want to serve all children in every school of our district. It has nothing to do with politics. Um, as Ms. Tyroller said, I never served on the zoning board, um, and I wish Ms. Waiters the best of luck.
Uh, I first want to congratulate Mr. McCauley on that front-page story, uh, in Hoboken reported this week, written by Stephen, of course. Um, I think that it's great that we're getting former students and current students involved in a short film, and I know you've been working on this for a while, so congratulations and much, uh, luck going, yes. And then, secondly, I, and finally, I just want to thank the board, uh, for passing the, uh, contract. I know Gloria was here, and she was on the negotiating team for the union side, and, and as Tom said, uh, it was a long process, seven months, I think? Um, and it was plenty of long meetings, and we got through it, there was ups and downs, and I'm very, very proud that we passed a good contract for the board and for the union. Thank you so much.
I'm good, thank you.
Um, well, that's the first time anybody's ever called me a dictator, and, um, I just want to say that I'm really proud of all nine of us, because I think that over, that this past year, I guess we've all, this, this board as is, has been sitting together since, uh, January, and I think that we have been a great team. I think we've worked as a board, we've been collaborative, we've had our discussions. Yeah, we have disagreements amongst ourselves that we, you know, between board members that we discuss, but I think that, um, we have come to meetings, we have, uh, meaningful, respective discourse and conversation, and I'm, I'm very proud of us, and I, I think that, uh, there's a lot of integrity here, and I'm, I'm really proud to be part of it. So I wanted to thank all the board members for all their hard work. I also just wanted to mention that, um, we have brand-new science labs in Connors, and there has been some, uh, loving attention given to that building over the last few years. Unfortunately, uh, it was our building that was worst-hit during Sandy, because it was in the big flood area. We had a lot of rework to do, but, um, the school's beautiful. We had a lot of rework to do, but the school's beautiful, it's sparkling, it had great scores last year, and I, I think we should be really, really proud of what's going on at Connors as well as all our schools. So with that--
Motion to close?
Oh, 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 wait. Okay, so, yeah, let's do the, let's have a mini-recognition. She came just in time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, our Connor Student of the Month for September is the sixth grader, Tashana Transitioning, transitioning to the sixth grade can be difficult for students. There are more responsibilities, and the assignments are more challenging and involved. Not for Tashana. She has not skipped a beat since the beginning of the school year. She completes all of her assignments and puts forth great effort, no matter how large or small the task. We are very proud of her and look forward to watching her grow academically and socially this year. Please join me congratulating Tashana.
Thank you. Well, on that note--
Madam Chair, very, very quickly, my apologies. Just to clarify, Dr. Johnson, wallet, excuse me, Connor School does have wheelchair accessibility or disable, disability, accessibility towards the side of the building through the parking lot, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
And then take the elevator.
Yeah, so there's an elevator from the Second Street entrance? Yeah. Thank you. And with that, can I have a--
Do you have a motion from, to close the meeting?
Yeah, we have a motion to close. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.